Okay, that's another meeting.
Yeah. That's why he had to, it takes it like ten seconds after.
The leg?
To switch first to go over to the live.
That's not live right now.
We ready? Are you ready? Okay. I'm gonna let the ladies get their chairs. Like I'm leaving it myself. Ready? All set? Okay. Good evening, Groveland Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, January 5th. Supposed to start at six, it's about 6:07. And we'd like to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to join us, that'd be great. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First of all, we had a meeting last Monday and Joe made a statement, then I followed it up with a few words. My only regret was that I didn't say, in my opinion. And so when I speak, I'm not speaking for the entire board, I'm speaking for me. So if you heard that, that should have been part of my comment. Is that fine?
Thank you for that.
You're welcome. We're going to appoint, hopefully, Sean LaBelle from Five Stocker Avenue in Groveland to fill the Electric Light Commission vacancy. And at the next annual election, Sean will run for office if he likes hanging out with us.
Correct.
So, did you want to speak a little bit, Mike, about Sean? Or shall we have Sean say a few words? Sure you guys have all done your homework and...
We have. If you'd like Sean or if you're not comfortable.
Oh, go right ahead, I know. You're not shy for a microphone.
If I misspeak, I know. But Sean's been living in here, in town, I believe it's seven years. He has a wife and two daughters, young daughters. And he's currently employed with the Raleigh Municipal Light Department as a first-class lineman. So he has experience there. I hope you have his resume, I don't have it.
Yes.
Memorized, I would say he's probably been a lineman for about seven years as well.
Very good.
Am I close with that? So he knows the industry. He, um, his skillset will be similar to Mr. Rollins who resigned, as he was a foreman with Middleton, you know, some light department. So we're hoping that Sean will be able to fill in, in a like role, at Mr. Rollins', Mr. Rollins' place.
Very good.
And his service was greatly valued and
Right.
For personal reasons, he had to step down, but...
When we saw his letter of resignation, we did acknowledge that he had served and done a good job for you and...
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate people doing that, because it's not easy, you have to give a lot, a lot of your time and you appreciate that.
Sean has already also been attending our meetings up until this point, for a few months.
Sean has?
Yeah.
So he's got some background and...
Yeah, well, getting used to how we operate, I guess, or what.
I've made it through them too, so...
You have, you're still standing, you're sitting.
You're still willing to step up.
Very good, very good.
And he should be coronated, not appointed.
Do, do we make the, is it a joint appointment?
It is a joint appointment.
Okay, and how many commissioners do you have here tonight? Two? That's fine, okay.
The other one was supposed to be, the chairman was supposed to be here, I don't know.
Is he thinking it's a little later? What do you think? We can go ahead.
Right.
I don't want to, uh...
You speak for him.
Mr. Brady.
All right. So...
If we have a quorum, I assume we could proceed.
Yes. Do I have a motion that we appoint Sean LaBelle to serve on the Electric Light Commission and fill the vacancy left by Ken Rollins? And Sean, if he chooses, will run in the spring for the, because it's an elected position for the office?
That's adequately worded, so I'll say so moved.
All in favor, second? No more discussion? Aye, it's unanimous and unanimous. Should it be a roll call vote?
Roll call vote for you guys?
So... Mike and Kermit support this appointment.
Yes, definitely.
Very good. painless, huh?
Thank you. I got nervous for nothing.
I hope you didn't get nervous.
Did you want to say a statement?
Uh, no, that's fine, I'm just, I'm glad to be here and to be, be able to help the town out.
Very good.
I have only, my family and I have only been here a short time, but we're looking forward to spending a lot of time here and getting involved in the community.
Good, it's a nice community.
How old are your daughters?
Uh, three and two.
Oh, boy. So they can hang out with Mike's kids.
Yes, that's right.
They can babysit.
Very good. Thank you, congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your service.
Thanks so much, good to see you, nice to meet you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Good to see you guys. Okay.
Very fortunate, he was a very qualified person, we get a qualified person.
Absolutely.
Good news.
Now, a discussion regarding the FY16 capital requests. Are we, are we spearheading this, or is Jeff and his board, or what, what's how we...
However you'd like, I think it's really, you have the three options in front of you. I think it was just to kind of go over it again before capital makes their final.
Did you give that to me, Denise?
Yes, all three copies are in your packet. And I do, the finance, do you guys all have copies?
Very good.
I'm sorry, Betty, no.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Just so we can get a little acclimated, looks like we have three options. Option one is essentially the capital budget that was already in place. Option two is a revision of the original. And option three is a second revision of the original. Now, the decision to which one of these is adopted rests with the Capital Improvement Committee. However, we can provide consensus here tonight, not necessarily a vote, but we can provide consensus or even three individual opinions as to which one of these we like and why. And certainly the board members here, the commission members here or through the chair can ask us questions as well. So if any one of you, I, I certainly have an opinion, I'd love to hear from Betty, of course, and from Bill as well. So whoever wants to chime in first, I'll do mine last. See if, we might even be able to have a consensus that we all agree, this board may agree on one of these, so...
Well, I don't think we have to do that tonight, do we? Our board? We can listen and, and listen to their reasoning as to why they support one over another or all the good and bad points and where we're going to be. We have a finance committee here who takes, has a big role in all of this. I'm glad you're here, thank you. So, um, am I wrong in saying that the Capital Improvement Committee makes recommendations to the Board of Selectmen?
Correct.
And they go, they usually meet with you also, correct? Before we all get together in the selectmen's office? Here it is now? Okay.
So if we voted on one of these, it really would not be good, because we want you to vote on, on one and then we'll, then we'll probably support that vote. I think Betty's point is very well taken.
Capital Committee will vote a recommendation to the board director.
Right.
We would have to agree in a vote on a question first, submit it to the, to the selectmen. We also send it to the finance committee for their review and input. But the final call, the final decision is the, is the Board of Selectmen's as far as what goes, what actually goes on.
The warrants.
How I would, how I would look at it is I would take and look at it, what do we need and absolutely need? What is essential and not something that we want? So, you know, going down the list that I looked at, I saw that the Communication Board was needed over the Police Department that in, in dire needs to be replaced. I know from what I've seen here, we're definitely gonna probably at one point need a ladder truck. Can we afford all this at once? I guess, I could ask you guys if you could answer that question, if we can afford the package of doing it.
Madam Chair, a question?
Absolutely, go ahead, Jeff. Is that mic gone?
I'm chairman of the Capital Improvement Committee, 34 Center Street. These three options are a result of the meeting that we had on December 15th. We discussed different scenarios, I'm sure you remember. So, these three options were basically what we put forth, the, the Capital Improvement Committee put forth to the selectmen, just so you'd have something to look at, different scenarios. But we heard a lot of testimony from the fire chief as to his rationale, why he wanted these things and when he needed them. So, this was an attempt to kind of shuffle things around a little bit, give a couple of different options to spread out the cost, essentially. Because when it comes, when it comes down to it, it's, it's really up to the finance director, the finance committee, and the Board of Selectmen to figure out if this is, if it's feasible financially for the town to do this. So, we wanted to give you a couple of different ideas and options to look at in light of fiscal feasibility and to see if it's actually what you feel is reasonable. So, option one, as the Selectmen Demore said, is, is the original, that was the, that was the original plan that, based on the request that we had, the interviews that we had, the acquisitions that people wanted this year. Of course, when we, you know, assessed all the things that the fire department needed, the dollar figure does get pretty high. So, option two, we took the, we kept the ladder truck, the aerial truck, in FY 2016. And we moved a couple of things into fiscal year 2017, which included the handicap access van for the council on aging. And then we moved the pumper engine to 17, and we moved the squad one to fiscal year 2018. And as you can see, that balances out a little bit. But in option three, we kind of switched a couple of items around and kept, we, we put the council on aging van in 2017 and, but then we moved the air packs and the pumper engine to 2016, as well as the central station doors. And the rest of it, we kept the same, which was more for the cemetery department, finance director, town hall, technology upgrade, the console, the communications console, and the cruiser for the police department. So those things, we felt like we should move forward with this year. The only options we, we were trying to balance out were the acquisitions for the fire department. So what you see in front of you is kind of a couple of different ways, three different ways we could approach that. And so what we were looking for tonight is, because I sent this to everyone ahead of time, finance committee and selectmen, finance director, so they could kind of, you could have a chance to look it over and get a sense of what you think is reasonable. And what we were looking for, Capital Improvement Committee members were kind, to get some kind of feedback after you've had a chance to look at this, as to what, what you think is the most favorable scenario. And also from the finance committee as well, so... That's really the overview of what, what this is here.
I don't know, we say this over and over again, it's, it's, it's needs versus wants and what we possibly can afford.
Right, well, can I ask, ask a question through?
Yeah, sure you can, Jeff.
I'd like to ask the board if you have a general feeling on what you think the need was. Let's, let's talk specifically about the fire department, okay? Did you have a sense of what, based on the fire chief's, if the information he provided, what piece of equipment do you feel was the most needed and the most urgent need?
At this particular time?
Uh-huh.
Well, the fire chief would like to replace three vehicles, is that right? And, um...
Right, but I would...
And, and, and can, you know, his argument or his presentation was that by doing this at this time, we're going to save maybe quarter of a million dollars? Or half million, quarter of a million? I'd like a new house too, but just because I can save a half million dollars by doing it now and I can't do it, so that's, you know, we, this town's very conservative, so... I've had conversation, I think the pumper is very important since we don't get water to every place in town as quickly as we should. We have some places like Gubtec Road, where I think Mr. Cook lives. You know, I, I, it's great to say yes, but we're really not Santa.
What one?
And I, I just, I think the pumper is important.
One of the, um, one of the statements that he had made and I had picked up that night was, and I could be wrong, one of the pumpers were not due until 2024. And he was looking to move it ahead of schedule because he was saying, if you buy three now, we're gonna save 200. But my point was, the truck's not even come to its due life yet. So we can still get five more years out of that truck, why bother replacing the pumper now? That's how I felt. My opinion is, again, you know, he said the ladder was up anyway, it was up with you guys this year anyway. Up close too, 17, it was up.
It was up.
So we knew what's coming on, online to be replaced. So that's, I thought, at the end of the night, I took that the ladder truck was the most needed thing and it was gonna be coming up in like 2017 or whatever. It's a big, it's a big expense. And my point was, if we're buying the truck for 850,000 and we finance it, it's gonna be a million, two million, five when it's paid for. So, if you bought three and saved 200, but you're still financing it, are you really saving? We are saving money, but we're not really saving, we're paying it down the road. That's how I, and I might be looking at it wrong, but me as a businessman, that's how I kind of look at it. So, I'm gonna say, me, I'm gonna be outspoken, I'm gonna say the communication system. I'd like to see the truck put off to 2017, if our finance could afford it and we can do it in this year. 2016, we can do it. I hate borrowing money and putting the town in the hole, but the most important things, and that's what I took out of that night was, those two items.
I think we, my opinion, we all agree that we need that communication system. It serves the entire town, it's put together with duct tape and gum, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, that wasn't even a question, really.
And, and, and we know that, how we, we feel strongly about that.
Betty, may I?
You may.
So just for informational purposes, option one, with the exception of the, the council on aging van, which I believe is no longer needed for this coming year. To borrow everything under option one, some would be 20 years, some would be 10 years, some items would be five years, but the total cost of that would be 201,000 that we would need to find in our fiscal 2016 budget. Just the cost of the ladder truck is 80,000. The cost of the pumper engine is 41,000. And the cost of the highway truck, which has kind of bounced around, is 14,000. So, if you take any one of those off, that's what we're looking at. So if we remove the ladder truck and the pumper and leave the Ford 450, it's 120,000 off of that, so you're looking at 80,000 dollars in total borrowing.
What's the number again, Denise, 180?
It's 201 is the total.
Yeah.
So if we take off 120,000, for those two vehicles, you're looking at 80,000 to borrow the remaining items. Again, over a course of five to 20 years, depending on their life expectancy. If we remove those, there's nothing for 20 years, everything's under 10 years. But to Bill's point, the ladder truck at 850,000, at the end of the 20 years, would cost 1,251,625 dollars with principal and interest. So you are looking at an additional 400,000 dollars worth of interest costs.
I have a question. I don't recall, but what, does anybody know what we had for capital improvements last year? For fiscal, this fiscal year, I guess? Like what is our?
Off the top of my head, I don't think there was a lot, there wasn't much.
No, there wasn't, there was a highway truck.
The crew, the line cruiser, the highway truck.
Correct.
That may have been it.
I think that was about it.
Yeah, that may have been it this year.
We're looking, it seems like we're looking at this one piece of the puzzle. And we don't, we're looking at this kind of in isolation almost, and we, I mean...
From everything else that's out there?
From everything else in the budget is, it's great that we're looking at this, but it's kind of like, where does it lie in the budget and what can we do as a town financially? I guess...
So you're saying, are we being premature?
I mean, if we had the whole budget, you know, we had...
Because they don't, when are they, everybody's supposed to get your paperwork?
So budgets are due this Friday. And I guess it, that comes back to, you know, what are the priorities of the town? If a priority is a fire truck, then we find the money somewhere. I think that's what this discussion is hoping to decide. It's, you know, what do we need? We need to invest in our infrastructure, whether it's now, whether it's next year. Eventually, we are going to need to replace all of these trucks. So, you know, when is the right time? You know, we don't know what's gonna happen at state aid in the future. We don't know what's gonna happen with the schools and if they're gonna build a new school. So, I mean, those are all things to take into consideration. But like anything else, if we're looking to add positions or change anything in the budget, it's what's the priority? And if it's a priority, then we need to find it somewhere. And it might mean making cuts elsewhere, but that's something that you need to find out what is, you know, what is needed.
I'm Bill Cook, I'm the chair of the Finance Committee. And there's a lot of avenues to this, I talk to different members of the committee and stuff. And without looking at the whole puzzle, we, we have a problem with this all the time in the town. We don't look at the whole puzzle, we only look at pieces of the puzzle. And we never get the whole picture at one time. We only get bits and pieces of the puzzle. Capital Improvement Committee looks at ways, how, how can we afford these items? How can we spread this out, stagger them, whatever else? The fire chief came in here with a different philosophy than the last fire chief. He thought that they should be smaller and faster. His exact quote out of his mouth. That one truck, he, one pumper, I believe he was talking about replacing, it was too big. Well, but there's nothing wrong with it, but it's too big. Well, that, it's a different philosophy, you can't do anything about that.
It was too big before.
It wa, wa...
It didn't change, right?
Right, right. It, it's still running and there's no issue, but it, it's too big. Have we looked at all our avenues of what you can do? Today, in conversation, at work, I get talking to somebody, and they mentioned something called the quint. And I go, what's the quint? Well, the quint is a combination ladder and pumper. And apparently, there's some cities and towns that use this today. I don't know what our tallest building is in Groveland, and I don't, and I'm, and my understanding from the fire chief, if you're gonna fight a fire, you need a ladder truck. I will not tell you, I am a firefighter and I, I'm, and I'm not gonna tell you, I'm, that's my expertise. That's when you, that's when you call the expert, the fire chief. But they mentioned this quint, we're talking about replacing a fire, a ladder truck, we're talking about replacing a pumper at some point. Whether the necessity's at this point, I don't know. It sounds to me, from looking at the items on the list, right out of the thing, the two things that seem to pop right up is that ladder truck's pretty old and it's dangerous and without communications, you're out of business. So those two are big items that I think we have to be concerned about. But, we have to look at the whole puzzle. And, you know, and it happens to us a lot of times. We have different groups going in different avenues. So, at some point in time, we may be looking at a new high school. We, we decide to buy open space, but we don't realize that we have some other expense coming up. You gotta keep afloat somehow and make that all manageable. And I, I know the Capital Improvement Committee tries to put a whole package together here to try to make it so it'll work. But, I mean, those two stuck out for me. But I re, I really think you have to look at the whole puzzle before I'd say, hey, this is what I definitely agree with. Like, and I know, and like I said before, I know none of us want any firefighters to be unsafe. And the air pack situation before, I believe the bottles, two years ago, I don't, how long has the fire chief been in the fire? Has it been two years?
No.
One, about one year? About a year ago, he came, when he came in, he found that the bottles were supposed to be expired on the air pack. So they replaced the bottles. So I don't know if that buys us more time to get air packs, or we, we're in more need of air packs right now. So that's really, to get all those parts of the, the puzzle, I, I mean, I have this, you know, I just did my typical Google search on the quint and looked at it. And my understanding, the Davis Fire Department has it online and that's what they use. It's smaller, it's faster. It gives you your ladder. We're a small town, I don't know. And I, I don't know if the...
Is that what you said, ladder and a pump?
Ladder and a pump. It's a combination. It's your combination tool. The, the quint stands for the quintuple combination pumper, is what it basically is. And anybody wants a copy of this article, it was just something, and you know what? Fire chief might come in here and say, that absolutely does not work. And you know, he's the expert on fires, not me. But it's just an idea. And I just think that, you know, I know we tried to put Band-Aids on this ladder truck before and he explained to me it was something else with hydraulics, but I thought before, they said something about a gear that they replaced to try to buy more years out of it. But the, the vehicle that's, that other pumper, it's running, it's too big, but it's running and it's good. I think we have to deal with that for the time being, and as time goes on, you transition. And then there was somebody in the room, and I don't remember who, that had talked about, sometimes with the capital improvement stuff, sometimes it's set up that way to kind of stagger so that we don't have all 2015 trucks in the firehouse and then when it comes to 2025, we need all new. It was good to kind of stagger it a little bit. So I thought that was a good philosophy. And, and so we don't get to hit all at once also. So, without me taking the floor anymore. But that's, that's just some ideas out of my head, and I had talked to some other members. And, and I really think you have a great description of the puzzle. And looking at the whole, the whole thing, it really, that's what happens to us every year. And none of us want any surprises. We'd like to see everything and be able to realize, how can we actually manage this, you know? And how can we keep the firefighter safe and do all this at one time?
Can't borrow more than we got.
Right, exactly.
Well, that's good information. Bill, thank you.
Chair, I believe that fire chief's, part of the logic that he was presenting was that, and in buying the pumper now, is that the current pumper would be worth 150,000 dollars now. If we keep it, it's gonna go down and trade in value. And also, if we have more than two pumpers, which we have three now, when it came to outfitting the equipment for the, for the men, we would have to spend more to buy air packs and so forth, if we have the three trucks and if we have two. So he wanted to get rid of two, retire one, trade one in, and buy a new one. So they would end up with one ladder and two pumpers. And I think that was his, like, standard of equipment, ladder and two pumpers. I don't, I'm not exactly sure if the, if there's a need to separate the ladder from the pumper, you know, if there's a logistic reason for that.
Right.
But, pause, it's a good question.
That's the fire science, by the way.
Right, yeah. So, but I believe that was his rationale in, in wanting to move the purchase of the pumper forward, because we did have it out in 2020, I believe. But I would agree with, with the chair of finance in that the, I think the, the fire chief made a pretty compelling argument that, that the ladder truck was really the priority purchase and that it was a matter of safety for his men. And that it's a very tenuous situation right now. I mean, it could, it could, it's old and it could break down at any, any moment. And they've had...
And we could be forced to do something.
Pardon?
Then we could be forced to do something outside our plan.
We would be forced to do something, right. Or not have a ladder truck and then you put the fire, firemen at higher risk because they'd have to throw, you know, use hand held ladders and so forth up against on the houses. So, that was the...
Well, I would hope mutual aid would be an option.
Right. But he made the point that the ladder truck is not something you can depend on coming from another town. So, I mean, he had his, he had his reasons.
Needed to be a primary response, I thought, it was important.
Right, it goes to every fire. So anyway, that was what I took away from that meeting with his, so I would, I would agree with Kevin. I think, I think from the position of the capital improvement, option two would probably be... Um, so I would, I would agree with Kevin. I think, I, I think from the position of the capital improvement, option two would probably be probably the way to go at this point, is purchase the ladder truck now and then put off the pumper and the air packs. But, but we do wanna get here from everyone to see, you know, if there's another, if there's a reason that we should not go that way.
Andy, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I, I was just, um, I'm Andy Wiles, two eighty Main Street, uh, Finance Committee member. Um, the four twenty-five for the pumper, is that a net figure of the hundred and fifty in the trade-in?
Uh, no, I don't believe so. I think the purchase price is one four twenty-five.
It's four twenty-five?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's not a confirmed price from what it says here?
No. I mean, it's gonna be enough.
Okay, is our aerial, is our aerial, uh, truck now worth anything?
He said no, don't think so.
It's thirty-four years old.
Well, I, I, you know, just.
Gotta be worth something to someone, somewhere. You know, I mean, some small town might want it. Like, it'd have to probably go to Maine maybe or something, but it's gotta be worth something, but he made it sound like it wasn't worth a lot.
They'll take it in Maine.
My point that I made that night was, we bought that truck used for the town of Groveland, it served us quite a few years. And I did a little bit of looking, like you did about the quint truck. You can find, you can find used, not junk, but used ladder trucks in the four hundred and fifty, five hundred thousand dollar range. From a bigger town, Boston or some big town, that, um, have got, you know, gotten rid of theirs. And other towns buy them and they, they bring them into the shop, they go through them, they do them all over. I don't know if they didn't wanna go that route, if they just wanted a new truck or whatever, but I know that's an option. But I think it's too late at this time, point in time.
Um, Chair, uh, make a comment on that, respond?
Yes, I'm, I'm doing homework.
We, we actually, uh, Capital Improvement actually presented that to the, it was actually at the time, the Board of Fire Engineers. We, we went on the internet, showed them the, the, you know, um, available used trucks. And it was something they were considering at the time. Then we switched over fire chiefs and, uh, I believe that the, um, the discussion was with this chief, that the tech, the standards changed so much, that, you know, the requirements for equipment. Um, that, um, it'd be better off to buy a newer, a new engine rather than an old one, trying to refit it to keep up with the regulations and everything. So I believe that's how we kinda came to that idea that it's better to buy a new one at this point. Cause it's, you know, we're gonna have it for a long time. Uh, but we did go from, you know, over a million dollars, uh, originally. And then the, the fire chief put together his committee and they looked at the equipment and came up with this price of eight fifty for a truck that they felt was, uh, would fit the need for them. So that's why we're at that figure at this point.
Thank you, Joe. Joe, you had to comment?
Yes, yes, through the Chair. Thanks, Betty. I bet, I believe that, my opinion is the best solution is option three, and I'll explain why. So if I could get everyone to focus on option one for just a moment. I'm not gonna read out all the numbers, but option one is the existing plan. And the biggest driver of the one point seven million dollar expenditure, which is about one point five million, would be what the fire department requires. Now, I, I can't speak for the board, but I, I am sure that this board is very much in line with you folks. We wanna support the chief, we wanna support the fire department. We're not contesting anything other than, how can we get this equipment over to them as quickly as possible? This current plan, option one, will get them that equipment spread out between now and the year two thousand twenty. So it's not even an option. But here's what it would deliver if for some miracle, we'd have the money in the bank to do it. It would deliver a handicap access van to the council on aging. It would deliver a brand-new ladder truck to the fire department. It would deliver a brand-new pumper engine to the fire department. It would deliver a brand-new squad car to the fire department. It would deliver central station doors to the fire department. A one-ton truck to the highway department, a lawn mower to the cemetery. Twenty-five thousand for the town hall to upgrade its technology. The replacement of the console, communications console, which we all agree is very vital for the police department. And then every year they get a new cruiser, so that's what we would have. So, now, why I believe option three is the best solution? Is we shift things around and instead of spending one point seven million, we're spending eight hundred and eleven thousand. And what we would do, we would get a hundred and thirty thousand to the fire department to take care of the air packs. We would deliver a pumper engine, four hundred and twenty-five, central station doors, twenty-five thousand. A lawn mower to the cemetery, the technology upgrade to the finance, and the replacement console and the cruiser to the police department. That also gives us a little bit of time to further evaluate what type of ladder truck we want. Now, Mr. Cook just provided us with an idea. I have an idea, cause I did some Googling as well. There are ladder trucks that don't have pumps and don't have tanks. You can buy a brand-new one just as big and capable as the one that the chief is suggesting to reach wherever we need to reach, the highest buildings in this town, for about five hundred thousand dollars. We also have a command car. And since the chief told us that the squad car has at least another three years of shelf life, I would like to explore with him that perhaps we can use that command car and convert that into squad one. So we buy the pumper engine now, we try to make some money on the one we have, get a hundred and fifty thousand out of it. We come in with minimal borrowing costs. And we continue the discussion, working with the chief to get that ladder truck in here in FY two thousand seventeen. Possibly a lower version, either a quint or a ladder truck, full-size, the same that we have now, without a pump and a tank in it. And then we can also, again, explore the squad car. Can we take the car, current command car and turn that into a squad car? I mean, this is a volunteer call, volunteer fire department. We may forego having a command vehicle and convert that perhaps into a hybrid vehicle as well. And the good news is that we're delivering to the fire department, still, within three years, everything they need. Two thousand sixteen, we're doing something, two thousand seventeen, we're doing something, and two thousand eighteen, we're doing something. Hope that's not a fire. So that's why, in my opinion, through the Chair, I, you know, that's just my opinion, it's not a consensus of the board. You're asking for an individual opinion or, or a board opinion, my opinion is option three is absolutely the best solution.
Thank you.
Makes sense. Um, but ultimately, it's the chief that.
Right. Well, I, I would, um, elaborate on what Joe said a little bit. I mean, I kind of agree with Joe said, only because if he's getting a pumper for four twenty-five and he can get a quints, maybe kill two birds with one stone. Um, he's gonna be taking his other engine out of service for a hundred and fifty roughly trade-in value. He puts that money toward the quints. If he had to go a little higher in the quints. If we give him four twenty-five, he sells it for one fifty, he now gets a truck five, six hundred-ish in there. Maybe he can get it done this year. Maybe he can get the quints done this year, or, or something in that line. And we go with, um, option three. And then like Joe said, in, in the next thirty-six months, we fill in the other vehicles that are needed in the town. Um, and I think we're gonna be there by, you know, two thousand eighteen. That would be my opinion.
Denise, on here, we have the town hall technology. Do we have, um, does that include, uh, new and updated phone?
Yes.
Sure, that's part of that.
That's, that's the top priority is the phone system.
It's everything, okay.
So that'll jive with the new console of the police department too, or?
No, we need to connect the buildings with fiber in order to talk to building to building, so that's down the line. I would love to do that, connect all three buildings.
So, so the string and the Dixie cups aren't working anymore?
No. No, the town hall technology is for, um, virus protection, new computers, uh, the phone system is the priority. Uh, we'll see how far that gets us.
I think Betty was calculating some costs. What, what would the borrowing costs be on option three?
Um, so roughly, um, not entirely sure of the air packs and what their useful life would be. Um, and that's what I was just trying to do as I, so the borrowing cost of option two, just so you know, is about a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Um, and then I need to just modify that. So looking at about eighty thousand would be option three.
And maybe a hundred next year, if we, if we execute this exactly the way it is. If you look at the two thousand seventeen column on option three.
But just remember, if we do that next year, then you need to find a hundred and eighty thousand. Cause it's eighty from this year's plan, plus a new hundred thousand if you're adding new debt next year.
And my hopes is that, you know, we can work with the chief, again, we wanna support him fully. But again, explore, for example, a ladder truck that doesn't have a pump and a tank in it, and save a few hundred thousand.
And we certainly don't need to borrow everything. Um, you know, we could pay cash out of pocket for some of the smaller items if we have it. Um, the purpose of borrowing would be, I mean, anything with the truck. So if we're looking at a pumper or looking at the ladder truck, then it makes sense to borrow everything combined. Um, and then use that cash to cover the debt costs. Um, but, you know, we can certainly try and be creative with our borrowing, um, to accommodate whatever plan is selected.
Betty, what's your thought?
Well, I think the, um, option three, I, I'm inclined to go with that at this particular time. And, um, I'd like to have the chief come in and tell us, you know, why that's not what will do the trick. Or if finance sees something differently, then, you know, I'm certainly open to everybody's ideas. And, um, you know, Bill found out about this Quint ladder pumper that's used in Danvers. Uh, I'm sure Bob Lay probably looked into that, because he has been out doing his research, I know that. But I'm glad you brought that to our attention. Um, we don't know what the schools are gonna have in store for us. We're always asking town hall employees to be patient and we'll get to you later. Uh, somehow later never comes for them. And, you know, I, I think that's kind of unfair. So we have lots to consider. Um, we have a lot on our plate right now. And, you know, we have people come in here last time with, um, you know, maybe we should have a town planner, that's another position. That's the whole benefit package. Um, we're gonna negotiate with the fire chief. Uh, because the number of hours that, you know, his, his agreement with us is only sixteen hours and he's doing a lot of work. So we've, we've just got numerous things we have to take into consideration. In the past, Greg would work directly with the finance committee. Um, but I think we all should take, um, a leadership role in this. You're asking everybody to submit a budget, do a narrative as to why they need it. Um, and not be shy about what they're putting together, because many of them have been waiting for more technology, as you say. So.
Andy had a question?
Andy, go ahead.
I'm sorry for the interruption.
Thank you.
Um, the, the, it was about two hundred and ten for option one, is that?
Two hundred and one thousand.
Two hundred and one thousand?
Yep.
Okay. Um, how is our budget going forward looking right now?
I honestly, I have no idea what people are requesting, so.
Hey, I'll go revenue. You have a revenue projection yet?
Um, off the top of my head, no. We are posted through December. Um, we are up on some items. Our motor vehicle excise receipts are up, our real estate receipts are up. Um, building permits are, um, up a little bit from last year. Um, I don't know where we'll be in the next six months, but right now we're projecting well for revenue.
Okay, how about, how about the cost of the replacement of the line cruiser? Isn't that gen- isn't that paid for through, uh, ticketing and things? Comes through the state?
Community policing?
In other words, is this, is the cruiser included in this, uh, debt recovery price?
Yes.
Oh, it is. But haven't in the past, haven't we paid for that through revenue that comes through the police department?
No.
Not that I've seen.
It's always been voted at Tom Meany as an article.
Did you think it might have been the safety car?
Oh, is this the safety car?
I'm not, I'm not sure what you mean, Andy, I mean.
Well, every year we replace a cruiser. We've done that, I've been on the committee for twelve years and every year we do it. And every year, it's, it's been a wash, as far as revenue.
I, I think in the past years, there've been articles with capital that we've moved overlay money. Um, we've used free cash to cover. So not all capital is cash or borrowed. Um, which is certainly options when we, uh, the state hasn't been out to certify our free cash yet, so I don't know where we stand with that. Uh, but those are still options that we could use to apply to, um, some of these. So I don't know if that's how they've paid. I haven't seen, um, you know, state money or, or police receipts cover the cruiser. It's, it seems to be listed as a capital item.
Do you find that to be true, Joe? It was always?
Yes, my understanding, I know that it was probably financed various ways over the years, but it was always a capital. And it was always on the, you know, an article on the warrant as a capital asset improvement.
My opinion on, um, on option three is, if we're given X amount of dollars, say to the fire department and for whatever equipment they're getting, they may have to find a way to make it work. They may have to find that piece of equipment to fit the dollar amount. And it may not be a bad thing. If we gave them a million dollars, they'd find a way to spend a million dollars to fit that piece of equipment. So I don't feel bad holding it to the option three. And they may have to go out and work, I mean, and find the piece to fit the dollar amount they got to, to work with. I mean, I think it could be done. I don't think we're, we're short changing them any. And again, like everyone's saying, you know, we have a lot coming on, maybe the high school, different things. We can't be borrowed out and then go down the road and four or five years, we overborrowed. So I'd rather, I'd rather spend lightly, tread lightly than to go crazy.
The, uh, if I can, through the Chair, the, um, the capital budget, no matter what option, we need to spend two point seven million dollars, um, in the next six years. So even if, uh, we adopt option three and then next year, that column in two thousand seventeen is exactly the way it reads. Handicap access for a van for the council on aging, a brand-new ladder truck as proposed by the chief. A one-ton truck for the highway department. That comes, you know, we're, we're, we're spreading it out a little bit more. We still have to borrow, but we're spreading it out a little bit more. But I, I have a strong feeling we might be able to save money on that ladder truck with, with, with alternative ideas. And we need to give ourselves a little bit of time to have that discussion with the chief. Uh, and so let's phase in what we can now. Uh, and then, you know, continue to work on a modified accelerated format. Because if, if he didn't come in and give us, you know, provide us with this, uh, uh, you know, opportunity to have this discussion and to plan properly for the fire department, they would have received this stuff spread out over twenty, you know, until the year two thousand twenty. And when the chief says, I don't think anybody contests it, that the primary reason for bringing this equipment is for the safety of the men. We are all paying attention to that. So we're just trying to accommodate that need as much as we can. But if we can spread out the pain a little bit over three years, again, option three, even if we end up with a brand-new ladder truck, as he has proposed it, is still better than option one, which would buy everything all at once, which would be impossible. And option two is somewhere in between, which I, I don't like. So, so thank you for that. Andy?
Yes.
Um, I talk, I, I.
Of course you talk.
One of the, when I was sitting here with the chief, when he had come in, I, I know he's probably gonna say this is true, but if I do remember, toward the end of the meeting, he said the pumper wasn't his major point. He wanted the ladder truck, cause the ladder truck was the oldest piece of equipment. It was the most, one that was gonna break down, the one that was more dangerous to his men. Um, that's why I'm going back to say, if we went with option three and we didn't shave the money down to where he couldn't get a truck, we made it possible, he can still be able to get something. I don't think he wanted the pumper. I think he wanted the ladder truck right away, cause that was the most dangerous piece of equipment in the fleet.
He made that very clear. He made that clear.
So. And it, it's almost like a few people in the room already said, we're a little premature having this conversation. It's kinda
We don't know.
You're trying to do the right thing here, but on the same token, you know, you don't know.
Well, gentlemen, we have consensus and the, and the Chair has provided an abundance of caution. But, you know, we, we wanna check with the chief as well, so I think you have consensus from us, I guess. Have consensus with me.
We appreciate what you do, um, and how you've listened to everybody and you've heard people and you've made, you know, your you've, you've given us a lot to absorb or digest. And, um, you know, and we have a responsibility to do our best job for the taxpayers. And we're not gonna put anybody at risk, we know that. We're not gonna have something happen and, you know, say, well, they didn't purchase what we told them they should. We're gonna, you know, do a thorough job, I assume.
And I do just wanna remind the. And I do just want to remind the board that, you know, just because it's two point seven and there's a timeframe. I mean, this plan is, is not, you know, static, it will change.
Correct.
You know, I know the library has a leaking roof right now, that they were, sorry, they didn't get a chance to submit an article cause they're having problems, things like that that are going to come up, that you will have to take into consideration in the future years, so, you know.
A roof that blows off in a storm, I mean, we can't wait to have this discussion.
Correct, so just keep in mind that you may plan for option three and that next year you're looking at that truck and then something happens here, you know, that you need to find five hundred thousand.
Next year might be a different.
It may be a different situation next year, so do keep that in mind, that if you do put it off, there's no guarantee that, you know, next year will be the year either.
Then it will be an easier year.
Correct.
Right, okay. Anything, anybody wants to say anything else before, cause I know we'll be getting together soon.
Just one final comment. You know, the capital improvement committee has to vote, we have to submit our, our plan by January fifteenth though. So you still have time from the, from the time we submit it until town meeting, basically, to change if something comes up or you feel that, you know, that you need to, something needs to change, you obviously can do that.
So if you voted and then we agree with you and we voted, we can still change it by town meeting?
Well, I would say you wouldn't vote the plan until the budget is set and you know what the final plan would be.
When we're meeting just before the warrant is printed.
Oh, I see.
My point is that our, our plan is a recommendation to the board direct, to the board of selectmen. So if you have a reason to alter it or, you know, some other, you know, we, we're not going to get our feelings hurt. If, you know, you feel that there's a reason that, that things have to change, that's fine. But that's your prerogative, you have that prerogative until, until the day of town meeting, I believe, or until the deadline for the articles, so. So you may have more time to discuss this with the chief, fire chief, or, you know.
If we can appoint him, we can, coming up.
We have a tentative.
Tentative, okay. And we will make sure that if any changes come up, that we certainly let you know the reasons why, okay? We will be courteous.
Appreciate that.
And when the chair, when the, the chair accommodates the chief at that meeting, if we're going to see him soon, you know, certainly you pay, pay attention to when that meeting is, we'd love to have you in here as well.
Okay.
And you can help with the discussion as well when the chief comes in.
Sure.
And effectively may rebut what we are suggesting.
Absolutely.
Is there any way that we can drop the chief a letter and talk about this Quinton truck before we meet with him again and see if he can look into it?
I can just ask him, I can ask him to look into it.
Into a different option?
I think that would be, make most sense. So now when he comes in, next time, we kind of got the information in front of us.
Yep.
Well, if you're going to do that letter through the chair, if you're going to do that letter, can you mention the fire truck without the pump and the tank?
Yeah, I, I'm not going to actually go through a formal letter, I'm just going to call him tomorrow and ask him about it.
And also converting the command car into squad one, we can do that in three years. So we don't have to buy squad one. Command one, command one, I believe it's called, and turn it into squad one.
Is command one the chief's car?
Yes, it is.
But it's also.
It would have to be retrofitted to become.
I think it's retrofitted to do what emergency response.
There's a lot of equipment.
I don't know what the squad one does.
We talked about it with the chief and the difference was the squad car would be a suburban, which is a much bigger.
Okay, carries more equipment.
Same type of vehicle, but it's big, longer. And the vehicle he has is, I believe is a Tahoe, which is shorter.
Right.
So wouldn't, it wouldn't accommodate the same equipment, yes.
Wasn't he going to use it for EMS a lot too?
That's exactly what they're going to use it for.
Okay, it's just a, instead of sending a, a truck out all the time, they're going to send the squad out instead.
Exactly.
Very good.
Good.
I just wanted to add one piece. You know, after, looking at this earlier, when I finally got copies of it, I almost think option two. Could start Bill even better, because it gets us the aerial truck. It puts the pumper off a year. Seems to be something we could deal with. And if we can get some of these prices down, some talk that Joe offered, or Bill offered, you know, as far as alternatives for the aerial truck. I mean, what is our aerial truck height? What do we, what's our current truck?
I, I, I don't know, but one of the reasons why the chief specifically wanted this one is to make sure he could reach some of the, you know, the buildings we have.
Okay, so I assume that our current aerial truck will reach that far?
We've got a lot of large houses here too.
So the figure that you had on the aerial truck that you talked about without the, without the tanks?
Yeah.
Okay, how high was that aerial truck?
I, I don't know what the height was, but it was the same, it was the largest size and it looked the same picture as the one we're working at.
I think, I think the truck he was looking at was seventy-five feet, something sticks in my head, seventy-five feet, the one he was looking at.
I just looked at the biggest ones and took out tanks.
Georgetown Fire Department now, their ladder truck?
Yes.
So there's a reason we're not using our ladder truck to go to.
Bagnell.
Bagnell and Chesterton?
Correct.
And to the industrial part?
Trussaway, I believe, yes, because our ladder truck is not.
We are calling on Georgetown to, to that help.
Correct.
But also it was.
That's a staffing issue.
Also because he said our truck didn't staff, we don't have the staff during the day.
Yep.
It wasn't, it wasn't mainly because the truck was broken or something's wrong with it.
Correct.
He said it was because we don't have the staff here.
Correct.
Exactly, that's exactly what he said.
We're swapping off an engine company to go over Trussaway, which my point was if you're sending our guys during the day to Trussaway, why can't our guys run the ladder plant? But I guess they weren't equipped, they didn't have the knowledge or whatever, but.
I'm assuming there's more men needed for a ladder truck versus the engine, but, yeah.
I believe one of the points he made was that with the new ladder truck, it takes less men to operate it, is that?
Right.
So he doesn't need as many men on staff during the day.
Because you take a risk during the day of how many people you're going to have available, correct?
I think, I think he said it was either two or three. And his, his objection to depending on Georgetown or any other town is that, he said that the ladder truck is the first truck on the scene. And that extra twenty minutes waiting for the truck to come from Georgetown could be very significant, you know. So that's why he was pretty adamant about the ladder truck. And I know part of the reason for the length of the ladder is because not so much the height of the building, but the distance it is from the road, because we, they need to be able to reach the roof.
You know, like, like the new subdivisions, the newest subdivisions, he cited that as a problem, you know, real risk factors.
Good point, Andy. Thank you. Do you all see it?
So you're meeting, are you meeting next Tuesday?
Yeah, I'm going to post a meeting for next Tuesday.
You know, if you came in with one, one option, it would have been much easier.
Like wallpaper.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Council of revenue projections before the chief makes a decision.
Yeah. Revenue projections before.
And I know you don't have those yet, so.
Yeah.
It's the season.
Oh, wait.
Yes.
Thank you.
Situation. How many, how many new homes we got going on?
Debbie.
We have some decent, you know, new growth.
Yeah. Yeah, just driving around, I counted eleven real, real fast.
Did you?
Well, Bobby's property.
Right, there's three or four there, right?
Dickerson's up the street, the three. Yeah, it's been quite a few, so.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's, you know, as we were discussing earlier today, it's residential. And, you know, when you take into consideration residential, there's more services, so the cost of services rise when you're adding, you know, children or, you know, when you're adding, it's, it's businesses we need to attract, because businesses are all revenue where, where residential costs us.
Just for actual revenue for this coming year is more residents, when several years with zero.
Right.
Thanks.
Bye, Andy, thank you.
That was a good conversation.
It is good, they've got some good information.
Again. I would think there. We should go in a little bit more depth about the three options as well. Yeah, well, we can study them a little bit.
When we have the full picture of what's happening.
Right.
We have, you know, when.
Right, like, I, I would take into consideration what they are, what capitals are proven. And then, you know, when we put the budget together, see if we can accommodate their request or if you have a different idea of what options you would like to see. And at that point, obviously, we can see what we have to play with.
I don't, I don't think anybody has a feeling about creating our own option.
I kind of, I think they did some good work.
I know you were crunching some numbers.
I would just, just like, it's like when I do my budget at home, well.
Unfortunately, it's not that much different.
I better not do that.
Same, same pressures.
Future use of the Pines Recreation Area, it's on our seven o'clock spot here for discussion. The reason, I got a call around the holidays from Russ Conway, who is very instrumental in Pine Speedway day. And he was headed to some island, lucky him. And he, I guess they start very early planning this. And I told him, you know, this was something we were going to take on to get everything in order so people know what they can and can't do, what they need to do, so there's not, not any last minute running around. You need this, you need cones, you need insurance, you need help or if somebody hasn't shown up or those kinds of things. Cause he said they send out a flyer early in the year to let everybody who enjoyed the Pine Speedway back in the day, that it's, we have a certain date in October and it's going to be ongoing this year. And I said, I would bring it up to this committee, because we did talk about what we're going to do for everybody that wants to use that area. So.
So if I may just, so I spoke with our road commissioner today about the Pines. As you know, we're undergoing some construction down there. And the only concern he has going forward, for this year especially, is any of the new fields cannot be used for anything. There, we need time for the grass to grow, we need time to actually get those fields in order. Existing fields, it will be paved down there at parking lots, he has no problem with those being used. He did have some restrictions last year for the Pines reunion. We said that the antique cars could park on the baseball field, that was it. But they opened it up for regular parking, that was not acceptable to us. So there are certain things that, you know, if we are going to go forward, we just need to make sure we have criteria. And then someone's available to monitor that because.
So that would be the event coordinators, correct?
Correct, yes, we need to make sure that what, what the board is voting to allow to happen down there actually happens.
And how did that happen? The antique cars were supposed to be in one location?
Well, we had given them permission, as you know, it was under construction this past year. We allowed them to use the baseball field, it was supposed to be for the antique cars only, but they used it as regular parking.
So they were parked, so as people came to enjoy the day, they were parking out in the field?
Correct, correct. And that's something that we can't have happen if we're allowing the fields. You know, we do put a lot of money down there, so we can't have the fields. Again, it was okay with the cars, but then not just sort of general parking. And again, the new fields, we have had people asking to use the new fields that are still being constructed. And those are not ready and will not be ready at all this year.
This year meaning from spring until late fall?
Correct, correct, so probably not until next, you know, two thousand and sixteen would those fields be available for use.
Well, that's a problem.
So what are the existing fields at this point? Do you know, do you?
The Babe Ruth Field and the softball field.
Softball, one softball field?
Correct.
And two.
Utility fields for soccer.
Which are behind the baseball field.
Utilities.
Oh, mine, just for the record, your name and.
Dan Stewart, Fore Matthew Drive, Golden Recreation Committee, role the new softball director. He and I pretty much maintain the softball field and the baseball field down there on a volunteer basis. Starting in, end of March, I probably spend nine to ten hours a weekend, not only coaching, but picking up trash, grooming the fields, and making sure they're playable for the kids, both baseball and softball. I don't put as much time on the baseball field, because I don't have the time to do that. I would love someone else to come down and volunteer their time to help out, because the field is definitely in need of repair. The infield sand is all grass now, so the, when the boys are playing on it, it's, it's like playing on grass, so it's not really an infield anymore. So maybe with the equipment down there in the spring, they could actually, you know, take off the top layer, so, and regroom it. But the fields do take a lot of work, the high school kids help me paint the dugouts on a volunteer basis. You know, they help clean up down there every spring. So, you know, it's, it's a volunteer system and it's, every town that comes here says you have the most beautiful fields we've ever seen. It's because we take care of them. You know, the no dogs rule out on the field, that's helped a little bit, because two years ago, we had a lot of problems with dog messes on the field. I know there's still people that don't read the sign and go on the fields and, you know, we clean that up in the spring. As for the utility fields, the soccer uses those, those have been used two years now? Two years. As for the softball fields, I thought they were ready this spring, early summer, but I guess not, the additional fields.
Any of the new fields, no.
They won't be ready.
They will not be ready.
So the, the grass planted is just to keep the, from erosion happening.
Correct.
So are they going to be planting the new grass and doing the new fields?
To be honest, I didn't get that in depth, I just asked him his thoughts on these events this year, and that's what he told me, is they won't be ready for this year. And we need to, and to the point that he'll probably coordinate them off, because anyone using those fields or, you know, walking around on them will cause damage.
Yeah.
So.
And, and the varsity softball coach is asked to, because they only have one field at the high school now, that the JV and freshmen can use the Pine softball field, and I've told Nancy this, three, three o'clock to five thirty every day. So I, that, that'll be put in front of the field use permit, hopefully that'll be available. And they will be instructed they can't touch the other fields, as will the youth program. So just hoping we'll be able to get in there in April. Right now, it's hard to even get in there, I don't know if you've been down.
I haven't.
They've done a lot of digging, so.
It's hard to navigate.
Yeah, you know, and this, when the muddy weather comes, it's all mud until they pave it, it's, you don't want to be driving in there, so.
The work they're doing down there right now is all the drainage for the sewer.
Yeah.
And I think you'll see by spring, they'll be in the process of, you know, getting that road completed to the point, it will be, you know, I'm not going to speak for the road commissioner, but I think that, that's why they're doing it now, to try and get it.
So they can pave.
To be usable and paveable in the upcoming season.
Right, the plan is sometime in March to deal with the electricity, there's no electricity down there currently, everything's been cut.
I went down there and there was no lights, you said.
Yeah, so the plan is it's getting a little too cold for them to be out there working, so they're hoping to finish the drainage by Wednesday of this week. And then they will stop working down there until probably March, when they'll start doing the conduits and, and the electricity. And they will be doing that with the light department. And then once that's done, they will start paving, I believe.
So do you think maybe by the fifteenth of April, it'll be accessible?
I don't know.
Cause that's usually when we start. April vacation's used in the middle of April, so the end of April vacation's when we start.
I mean, I'm sure the fields, those backfields will be accessible, it may still be a dirt road, I don't know when his paving schedule is, but.
They'll need the batting cage in the, in the softball field to start their workouts.
Yeah, there's not the existing fields there now, there's no problem with, those are fine. Um, it's anything new that he was concerned about going, you know, for this year.
Sure, well, I think it's good that they coordinate off and put signs up, you know, no access.
Right, and his concern is, you know, it, it was more so with the Pine Speedway is that it does draw a large crowd. They're afraid that people are going to not see the signs and not pay attention and still park on the, the new area. And then that would cause some concern for us. But as long as they adhere to those guidelines, then, he didn't have a problem.
So that's something that has to be enforced.
Correct, correct, and I don't know what kind of turnout your Groveland Day with parking and.
Well, we have police details.
How many did we have last year?
We had the whole force.
And that was, that's the difference, we had police details.
And, and Pine Speedway did not?
They did not.
I don't think I saw them, okay.
So maybe that's something we have to talk to the committee that plans.
Right, and I, I think, right, I think that should be part of your permit, I think the permit process for these events should be.
Spell it out.
Correct, you know, there was things he mentioned, and I don't know if you've done it recently, he mentioned bonfires. You can't, you can't allow bonfires with all the work that's being done. You know, that's not acceptable for this location any longer. I don't know when the last time there was a bonfire, but that was something he brought up.
Four, five years ago, Denise.
Has.
It's been a while.
Okay, so those are the things that he said, we just need to, you know, when, when these types of things are being approved, we just need to keep in mind, you know, sort of the, you know, the criteria and, and make sure that's enforced with the permit.
All right, so the, the sign off sheet, or the permissions sheet they come in to get, that's got to spell everything out.
Well, I also think you need to go back to the event policy.
Right.
And there's, there needs to be something that is adhered to. So if you want to revisit that, that's fine, but I think we should have a document that goes out to anybody requesting use of that site. And that's the criteria that has to be followed.
And we can't be hearing at the eleventh hour that we don't have. And we can't be hearing at the 11th hour that we don't have insurance or, because I was calling you when you were playing golf in Ohio, remember?
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
And it happened with both events, both events, it was the last minute, the insurance came in and it was kind of like, so if you're going to continue to use that, then I think you just need to make sure that this is the policy for everybody, this is the guidelines, everyone gets the same thing, correct.
I got a few phone calls the day that the Speedway reunion was getting set up, the reunion. And there was no help, I shouldn't say help, it was too confusing because of the construction and the management of what we were supposed to do as a town, to give them, to get them ready, so it didn't go smoothly. And they called me and I called Bob, Bob worked with me, we got it taken care of, the tent, they didn't know where the tent was going to go because they were in the middle of excavating, the area wasn't ready, it had rained for a week before. So I think there was a lot of misconfusion this year. We're going to have to go through the growing pains, and once we get through the growing pains, things will smooth out again.
It would be so nice when it's done.
I hate to see, I personally hate to see the reunion leave or not be put in. Groveland was known for Groveland Speedway. And that whole thing has really grown to the point where people know to come to the Groveland reunion Speedway. And I'd hate to take that away from Groveland because it's getting bigger and bigger and it is what Groveland was all about.
Well, that's what Russ said, people are getting in touch with him now because they plan their vacation for the fall because they come from all over New England and Canada.
If we were to, like someone said a minute ago, ahead of schedule, they know where to park the cars, they know what everything has to be done ahead of schedule, it's not last minute, I think we could put it to work, I think it would work well.
And with the new paving going down there, wasn't their parking going to be allocated with lines and everything, unlike it is now?
Yes, the parking will be very nice when it's done.
Yeah, so it'll be a little clearer for people to understand where they should park and where they should not. And I absolutely do not want any vehicles on the ball fields, I think that's absolutely crazy. If they want to set up a tent on the ball field, that's fine, but not a.
Right, and plus the antiques require worse to put on just because they're more likely to leak something.
Right, the issue with the antiques last year was they didn't, the owners didn't want them driven or parked on the dirt. Because it was all dirt, they were concerned with their cars. So we gave in and said we would allow them to park on the fields so that their vehicles wouldn't be damaged with the dirt.
When I was down there, I know part of the problem with putting the tents out in the fields were when they drive the rods in, they could drive them into a sprinkler line, so they didn't want the tents out there. So we have a conversation when the time comes, early on, we have a plan set forth, what's going to happen, where it's going to happen. I can't see if we couldn't put this together, make it work.
I have, I have some, I have some thoughts. Russ is one of the organizers for the event?
Russ Conway and Ken Smith worked with Claire very closely and the rest of her.
Claire Walsh.
Claire Walsh. And I think they spent a lot of their own money on advertising and programs and those kinds of things.
So if we accommodate them, do they know how much less space they have this year?
They wouldn't be losing space. Everything that's existing is still usable. It's the new space that's not available, so they won't lose any space.
All right, so, I don't know, Betty, your thought, Bill? Who would be, if we had a permit that had all of these stipulations in there, we're feeling good, you know, now we have a plan and they sign off on it, they come through the facility use, you know, the space use policy. Wouldn't it not be the police department to be the best resource we have in our town to manage those events? So for example, whether it's a show car or a car that belongs to someone visiting, making sure that it doesn't end up on a new field. I mean, Betty can volunteer, I can volunteer, Bill can volunteer, but I think the, you know, the best resource to make sure that those cars, you know, the, literally the traffic flow of show cars and visitors' cars would be best served by the police department.
Well, I would think that.
And maybe we have to price that in to the fee.
Well, in my opinion, that's not a detail, that's the police department. So I think if you're putting stipulations on a permit, that's for the police department to enforce as part of their regular rounds. You would say, these are what's allowed this day, they would have to take a trip down there and make sure that that's being adhered to. That would be different than a detail.
All right, so now, the other thing is, so that's good, that's good news. I thought they were going to end up with a lot less space and, you know. The next thing, it's very important, also is Groveland Day. What's the impact to Groveland Day? Are they working with less space or just the same problem, can't use the new space?
Correct, the same problem.
And we can use the police department to enforce restriction to the new space. And would the space be the same otherwise than what you have now? So do you have any concerns? And I'm pointing my hand, Erin Merrill or?
No.
Yeah?
No.
If you can just announce your names.
He and Blacky, School Street.
Erin Merrill, 14 Summer.
If you had, if you had your committee, you knew ahead of time what needed to be done, you guys could have people. I saw them parking cars, I mean, there was a guy in the road directing traffic in, so everyone would do their part. The cars, if they know ahead of time they can't go there, then you would hope that the committee that you had could help move it around as well and tell everyone where to park and put signs up or whatever.
Yeah, we start working on that in March, and we meet probably six times. And everybody gets a stake on where they're supposed to set up their camp, no parking, three police officers are enforcing it. So we didn't have any problems like that whatsoever. I think the biggest problem was the tornado that came through last year at six o'clock and knocked everybody out of there. But other than that, it's pretty smooth down there. People know not to drive vehicles on fields and go into, you know.
Police put up a lot of signs, no parking signs, we have the police do the parking, so.
And I think the difference is that they're local people, they don't want to ruin the fields.
So it's the first week in January and Betty had a conversation with Russ, which is phenomenal because we're already planning, it's so early, and we're having a conversation with you. So when do you think, what's the consensus or feeling with either you, Betty, or Bill, or maybe Denise can chime in? When should we have these permits done?
They're available.
Well, are we still looking at the same event thing that we did last year?
That's up to the board.
Because that policy, please, says 60 days, doesn't it, or 30 days before?
Only because we're having this conversation now, we're planning early, and then we kind of forget about this, and then we have a mad rush to get everything done in August or June or July.
Second Tuesday, second Saturday.
Saturday after Labor Day.
Saturday after Labor Day, so you would probably want it by the middle of July at the latest, which is pretty doable to us.
And I would say if the board were to, you know, vote tonight or whatever, that you would support to continue to have these events, then they can at least start planning. They can do their outreach, they can do their advertising.
That's basically why we're here.
So we don't need to, we, since they took the time and effort to be here, and Russ called before Christmas, actually. And we could let Claire know that, you know, there's certain policies that we want, that they know what they have to do. I mean, you've done this how many times?
Too many, too many.
And Claire, Claire probably needs more help with her event. Because as Bill said, he went over there and there was a lot of confusion Friday night before Saturday event.
And it was no blame to nobody, it was just the construction was going on and it was, they weren't used to where they had to put stuff. It all worked out, it all got worked out.
Well, then I can make a motion then.
To make a motion on the Groveland Day.
You can word it and I can just move it.
And I think this soon, our permit and our events policy is in order right now.
Yes, you're welcome to, I mean, I know last year there were issues with both groups and the insurance. If you want to revisit that, that's up to the board.
What reason would we revisit the insurance though? Because we need certain amounts?
Yes, the amounts that are in there are from our insurance company. But I know both groups had trouble obtaining insurance liability certificates for those amounts. So if that's something you would like to revisit, you can certainly do so. Otherwise, you have an event policy that is in place.
What is it? The cost was prohibitive for them?
Did they come back before us again?
Correct, your vote tonight would just be that you would support and you plan to approve these pending the proper permit process. So you're not approving, you're just letting them start their process and go ahead and do their work. They still have to come before you, they still have to go to the police department, all of that would stay the same.
And if there's an issue down the road with their insurance, they can do like they did last year, come, explain it, we can override it like we did.
Well, I would say you shouldn't get in the habit of that. If you're going to override it, then we need to adjust the policy. There should be one set policy so that you're not dealing it, so that they're not dealing with last minute trying to get into coverage. You're not dealing with approving it, it's done, this is the policy. So if that's what you want to look at, you can certainly look at that. And there's plenty of time to look at that, if they're looking to start in July, the actual permit process.
Right, and I think we have to treat everybody equally.
Correct, correct.
And we stay out of trouble.
Exactly, and that's the purpose of the policy.
Well, by the chair's invitation, then I'll make a motion that we support the Groveland Day event and the Pine Speedway reunion. And we invite the groups to submit proposals in compliance with our new field use policy. And it's subject to approval of the permits, we complete that support.
So it's the first Saturday in October for Pine Speedway Day and?
Saturday after Labor Day.
It's per Saturday after Labor Day for Groveland Day.
And I'll second Joe's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
No further discussion?
Just a question, the first one, first Saturday in October?
Is Pine Speedway Day.
It's Pines, and the other is?
Is Saturday after Labor Day.
Saturday after Labor Day, of course.
Groveland Day, Saturday after Labor Day.
Right, got it, good, very good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous.
Thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Seven ten, we have to vote on the insurance change for the Dewar Street project.
So there were some last minute changes to the two licenses, the license that you voted last week, granting Mr. Angelini use of the busing property and granting the town use of the Dewar Street property. Basically, they have asked that the town's liability coverage on his property is the same as we've required him to have on our property. That comes as a, at a cost of roughly $350 per year to our insurance costs. And I've included the new language and the new liability limits in your packet, if you'd like to review them.
Night.
Good night, thank you. What's the cost roughly?
$350 additional per year to add, to increase the liability that the town must have on his property.
To increase the town liability coverage on our property?
No, so we have a license, the town has a license to use Dewar Street for water purposes. And we've granted, or we will grant Mr. Angelini a license to use the busing property. We required more insurance for him than what we were putting in for ourselves, and they've asked that they be equal. So in order to make both policies equal, it's $350 more per year to the town to do that.
And the year, number of years are four, five, six?
Five to seven. It's five for the earth removal with an additional two if he chooses.
So we kind of thought everything was in order and now we've got another glitch, I guess.
That's a kind way to.
We really, we've been all set on this for quite a while. I don't want to delay it any longer. Do I have a motion that we, that Jonathan Eichman knows, is that who we would like to let know?
Yes.
That we will provide the same sort of coverage with, for an additional $350 that Mr. Angelini had to carry himself? Does that make sense to you?
I'll make a motion that we.
This should be the final change.
Fingers crossed.
Go ahead, Bill, before another change comes.
I'll make a motion that we accept to carry the extra coverage of the, on the permit licensing of the Dewar Street with an extra cost of $350 per year to the town.
So, oh, I'm sorry, second that.
Thank you, discussion.
So where are we now with the acquisition of this parcel?
So as Nancy alluded to, I don't know if you hear actually, Betty, this arose late in the day today. Mr. Angelini's attorney is in the hospital. So someone on staff contacted Nancy to have Jonathan Eichman contact him in the hospital and work out these details. We were hoping this would be the final piece and we would move forward with the closing on Wednesday. I don't know the status of it with him being in the hospital, if it will happen this week or not. I am hoping this is the final change to the purchase and sale, the licenses and everything, and we can vote it this evening and just be ready for the closing when it's available.
And everything that we've signed is ready to go?
Yes, you do have to sign, just because, it's just the, it's just the signature page because when this is inserted, it throws off the page numbers, so just for.
So we'll sign those tonight?
Yes.
And the rest of the document that reflects all of the requirements?
Correct, there's no other changes.
The buyer and the seller?
Correct.
Including this most recent?
This will be incorporated, yes.
Terrific, well, the Maddenley property was signed off last week, December 31st, and now we're going to hopefully complete the Angelini property this week or maybe next week.
Yes.
Great.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. So if you could sign those?
And through the chair, I was wondering if, if we should, when that purchase is absolutely finalized, we should send a letter to maybe all boards, but certainly the boards that would have a vested interest, like the Open Space and Trails, because I know that there was an effort that we recommended that a committee be formed to study how we're going to use this property. And so we would, we'd kind of like them, I would think we should let them know formally, hey, we got it, we own everything now.
Well, that's actually, that's on the discussion for next meeting.
Oh, it is.
Because there was some question when that proposed committee was getting, being gathered. It was, there was never a formal vote by this board to form that committee. So that's on there for next week to discuss.
Okay.
You know, the proposed Center Greenway Planning Committee.
And that, and that might be an item that we can vote on?
Correct. So if that's something, if that committee is something the board wants to have happen, I know Alex had reached out to some people, actually told him to hold off until the board actually took a vote to form the committee. They didn't want him to waste more time if it wasn't going to be necessary. But that is on the agenda for next Monday to discuss that.
Denise has four copies here from the phone.
There you go, Betty, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, and hopefully at that meeting, we'll be able to say, the deals are all done.
Correct, correct, hopefully.
Want to enter this into the record tonight or what do you, what do you know? Being sent to the planning board and we received.
Yes, I do know that Attorney Croner did drop this off or mail it to planning board members at their homes. One member returned it to me, did not feel it was appropriate, so I have one unopened packet. And then a packet was delivered here for the board. So I would say it's something you should, it also looks like it went to the ZBA and Building Inspector. So I think it's probably something, the planning board is an elected board, so I think it's just something you could take under consideration. I'll just read it.
You don't want to hold on to it?
Oh, yeah.
It's, he CC'd ZBA and Building Inspector, I'm assuming both groups got it in addition to the planning board.
Well, then to address, I think Betty has a concern. When a document is delivered physically to us, I feel like we're getting served by an attorney. What should our, what would you recommend our response be?
We've received it.
I mean, this could be positive, it could be negative, I need time to read it and understand it.
Right, well, I mean, I can certainly add it to the agenda for next week for you to discuss and decide how you'd like to proceed.
Because we can't automatically say, let's use, you know, throw this in correspondence either. It might not be appropriate for us to put this out as a public document.
It doesn't say confidential, does it?
It does not. But it should, if it's something that the board is going to discuss, it should be on the agenda.
Well, then that's up to the chair, maybe after we all read it and Betty can make a determination if it qualifies to, maybe it should be on the agenda.
I don't know, that's some, something, is he just saying FYI, this is what's going on?
It does look at, I mean, he is addressing it to the planning board, he's saying he would like to go to a planning board meeting. So I think at this point, you know, maybe the board would reach out to the planning board and say, did you receive this? Just to make sure that they've received it and they're taking action or going to discuss it. I don't know what the board, you don't really have jurisdiction over the planning board, so I think maybe it's just informational for you to have. I think maybe it's just informational for you to have. It might not need to be discussed.
What I would make, what I would make a motion to do with this is, I would forward this, ask Denise if she could forward, just to make sure they get a copy to the ZBA and to the planning board, and put it in their hands. It's, it's just, it's an FYI. It's, it's an ongoing issue that Groveland has. And, um, it's basically detached garages and attached garages, so it's going to have to be dealt through those two boards anyway. And so, I think that's where it needs to go.
And who did you say did not accept it?
One member of the planning board.
Okay. Well, I guess that's the point. If something was addressed to us, I just don't want to set a precedent where law firms can just drop off documents at us minutes before a meeting. That, to me, is distasteful. And I object to, to, to being in a position where we're, you know, forced to read documents and, uh, without adequate time and notice, so. That, that's, I'm not asking for, you know, that we do anything, but we should maybe think about setting a policy on that if, uh, again, without even reading this, whether it's positive or negative, I have no idea. It's just, it, it's just.
I would say we're in receipt of it.
I'm not comfortable with it.
That's it, right?
Correct. I mean, I can certainly, um, email him and say the board has received, he did come in today to make sure the board would get it.
Okay, so we've, we've received it.
And I did tell him there was a meeting, and I would be giving it to you this evening.
Right, and we haven't read it.
He didn't ask for action. He didn't, he just wanted to make sure you had received, that we received it here, and that the board would be receiving it.
Very good, okay, thank you.
And I can certainly scan it, um, and make sure that, um, these boards have received it.
We're going into executive session, is that right?
Yes. So, I would say at this point, you should probably, you could adjourn your regular meeting, and, or roll, you have to roll call into executive session.
Executive, right. So, I, do I have a motion that we adjourn, um, from our Monday, June fifth, meeting, uh, at, uh, it is twenty of eight?
Yes.
We will be going back, we, we will be going back into executive session, to executive sessions. And we will not be reconvening again in our regular selections meeting.
All right, I'll make a motion that we adjourn our regular meeting at eight forty. Second?
Favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that we will, we're going into executive session, so.
Can we, can we, uh, we can read out the reasons for the executive session? Okay, there's two reasons? Go ahead, Betty.
Yeah. Executive session one, at, um, we thought we'd be in at seven fifteen. It's a little later. To consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town, vote may be taken. And, uh, so I have a motion that we do that, and roll call vote.
I'll make a motion that we do it.
Okay.
And second?
I'll second it.
And, uh, all in favor?
Demore, aye.
Gorski, aye.
Aye, done.
Okay, thank you. So, we'll come out of that first executive session, conclude that, then go into the second. Is that right, Denise?
I don't think we need to close one.
Okay, so we can go into the second one. To, uh, conduct contract negotiations with the finance devote, uh, director, votes may be taken. And a roll call. Gorski, yes.
Uh, yes. Demore, yes, aye.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Unanimous, okay. All right, I, we don't think we have, yeah, thank you, Tracy. I don't think we have an executive sign to go on that tour, do you?
No, we can go into my office or into the, um, your former office.
That sounds good.
Um, I have the map, I have some.